Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. It's our Monday, December 9th, 2019 meeting. If we'd all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce the members of the commission that are here this evening. To my far right is Jamie Hind, who is an alternate on the commission. Next to Jamie is Jeff Kohan, who is a commission member. To my immediate right is James Fitzsimmons, who is also a commission member. To my immediate left is J.P. Benoit, who is our vice chairperson of the commission. Next to Jamie is Rocco Madarazzo, a commission member. And next to Rocco is Steve Allenson, an alternate on the commission. At the lower table to my left is Cheryl Ann Tubby, who is our recording secretary. And next to Cheryl Ann is Casey Han, our town planner. I'm Jim Seichter, the chairperson of the commission. Before I go to, I see some people coming in. Before I go to approving our minutes, just to make an announcement for those people that are here this evening. There's several items on our agenda that are not going to be heard this evening at the request of the applicant. The first is a public hearing. It's a continuation of a public hearing, item number one, which is a special permit distribution and operation in office, Benchmark Land Development LLC at 988 East Center Street. The applicant has requested this. We continue to our January meeting. Apparently, the applicant is gathering some additional information for the commission. The next item we'll have no action on is a special permit. It's a warehouse and distribution center. Jay Dewey, on behalf of BL Company, is at 425 South Cherry Street. Again, on that one, there's no action requested on that by the applicant. So before I go to our first order of business, at this point in time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval of our minutes of our November 13th, 2019 meeting. If anyone has any corrections or additions to those minutes, if none, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minute of November 13th.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kohan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you know, he abstained, as I believe Jim was not able to attend the meeting. Brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is old business. It's a site plan addition to existing Dunkin' Donuts for Amrocha at 682 South Colony Road. And I believe, Mrs. Han, you've indicated that the applicant has indicated that they're withdrawing the application. However, we have not received a formal request from the applicant. Is that correct?
Well, I instructed them that they need to withdraw it because we hadn't received revised plans, and they're out of statutory time, but we didn't get the formal withdrawal. So I have to recommend that the commission deny the application, and then if they choose to resubmit.
They can resubmit the application. So at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion from any of the commission members to deny the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we deny application 227-19, site plan addition to existing Dunkin' Donuts, Amrocha, 682 South Colony Road, because we have not received the necessary information.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Kohan, please.
Yes.
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 And yes. Which brings us now to our next item, which is new business. It's a site plan, site improvement, T.L.B. Architecture LLC, 739 North Main Street Extension. It's a community pool. And again, Mr. Madarazzo, if you please note all correspondence for the record, and then if the applicant and/or his representative would please come forward to begin preparing for their presentation.
Mr. Chairman, we have correspondence to Casey Han, Town Planner, from John Walworth, volunteer to the Pool Building Committee dated November 26, 2019. We have correspondence dated November 27, 2019, referencing site plan application 237-19. We have inter-office memorandum to Casey Han, Town Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer Division, dated December 5, 2019. We have a memorandum to Planning and Zoning Commission from Rob Baltamitis, Department of Engineering, dated December 6, 2019. A memorandum to Casey Han, Town Planner, from Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, dated December 6, 2019. Correspondence dated December 4, 2019, to Casey Han, Town Planner, from Mike Fortuna. And an attached set of plans, and an additional set of plans dated December 4, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. If the applicant and/or its representative, please introduce themselves.
Sure. I'm Mike Sevenelli, 27 Erolia Meadow Drive, here in Wallingford. I am the vice chair of the Park and Rec Commission and the chairman of the Pool Committee. We're happy and thank you for having us here tonight. As you probably all know, we've been working on this now for about three years, and I'm anxious to go swimming soon. So we hope that tonight we can answer all your questions and present this to you in a way that you'll understand it clearly. Mike Fortuna is the principal of T.L.B. I'm going to turn this over to him, and as his people come up and do their presentation, he'll introduce them accordingly. Thank you.
As Mike said, I'm Mike Fortuna with T.L.B. Architecture. What I thought I'd do tonight is give you an overview of the proposed project, show you some images of what we are proposing it look like. Then I'll turn it over to Gary Gimmont to go through some of the site details. So generally speaking, I'm sure you're all familiar with the existing pool facility.
You could please just bring the mic a little bit closer to yourself. Thank you, sir.
So the plan is to remove the existing pool completely, the roughly 45,000 square foot pool, remove the existing bathhouse, and remove the building out by the street that has the filter plant. And what we're proposing to do is essentially reuse the parking lot with some reconfiguration, which Gary will get into, construct a new bathhouse, a new 8,000, roughly 8,000 square foot swimming pool, a splash pad, which is spray features and water features, an activity lawn with a shade pavilion, playground, sand volleyball, and then some reorganized parking. One of the features that'll show up on all of your maps is this passive walkway near the wetlands, which is going to be removed at the request of inland wetlands. So that's no longer going to be part of the plan. What we're proposing for the new pool is a somewhat free-form pool, but with a four-lane lap pool, 25 yards, a water slide, some activities in the pool, including basketball and volleyball, and then a splash pad out near the street. Very simple building forms. The existing, or the proposed building is not much bigger. It's actually a little bit smaller than the existing bathhouse. And then you can see beyond the activity lawn and the playground. So the splash pad is really just a series of spray features. Some are very small, about three to four feet tall for the little kids. And the tallest of them gets to be about 12 feet tall with more water for older kids. And they'll all be on a soft pave surface, like a playground surface. Lots of bright colors. And then the bathhouse is, as I said, very simple forms. We've broken it into two sides and a portion in the middle so that the mass of the building stays much smaller. We've got an entry point with a shade canopy where the staff will sit and receive tickets in the middle. And then you go left or right to the locker rooms and out to the pool deck. And the central portion houses two individual changing rooms and the lifeguard area so that in the shoulder seasons when the splash pad's open but the pool is closed, you can close down the big locker rooms and still have toilet facilities available for the people using the splash pad. So that's kind of the big picture. I'll turn it over to Gary to walk through the site planning. And then we also have, John will go through the traffic analysis.
Good evening. My name is Gary Gimmont. I'm a landscape architect and principal with Richter &amp; Seegan, landscape architect and site designers. I'm sure you're all familiar with this and the plans, but I'll just quickly-
I think, sir, also if you could perhaps bring that a little closer to your mouth, too.
Okay. The zone that the project is currently in is the R18. It's surrounded by an RF40 and RU40 on the sides. It's located off of the North Main Street Extension. The yard side backs have been added to the plans per request. There's a 40-foot front yard side back, sorry, front yard, 30-foot side yards, and rear yards. The building is actually a little over 50 feet from the property line. We have reconfigured the parking lot a little bit to try to increase the number of spaces that are available. We're proposing a total of 116 spaces. As you enter the parking lot, it's essentially using the same curb cuts as the current entrance to the pool site. There's parking and a turnaround loop at the end. We have sized that loop so that emergency vehicles, fire engines, and a bus can turn within that area. We have included handicap reserve parking spaces per the number of parking spaces that we have. Most of them are located, immediately adjacent to the building, and we have one located over by the sand volleyball and the playground area. From features of the project, as you enter from the North Main Street Extension, you have the pool entrance with a seat wall outside of it. As you go further up the sidewalk, there is an activity lawn with a seat wall. There's also a pull-off space for some food trucks. There's a playground area, sand volleyball pit, picnic pavilion. And within the pool area itself, as Mike had mentioned, there is a splash pad, several canopies or shade structures on the site. We have included the greenbelt lines, the upland review area lines on the plans, and we have shifted the proposed new improvements so they're all outside of the greenbelt line. As shown on this plan, the existing improvements, some of them were partially within the greenbelt line. Some of the deck improvements of the pool still clipped the area, but none of the major structures on the site are within that greenbelt line. All of these site features are being removed. There are several mature trees that we are saving within the site. We're showing tree protection fencing around those. We have more than the required setbacks for the building from all of the property lines, both front, side, and rear. We have provided details in the sets for each of the different components within the project in case you have any specific questions about those. From a grading point of view, we have, as I mentioned before, we reconfigured the parking lot. We've pulled it away from that steep slope below the cemetery area, and we have included a retaining wall there to help soften the slopes on that so that they're less steep above and below the wall onto the parking area. We have included planting plan as required with size at planting, as well as the future maturity of the trees. We are including a conservation seed mix on the steeper slope area, which will end here. As Mike mentioned, this area is no longer going to be part of the project. And the rest is seed, shrub plantings, and shade trees and ornamental trees. And I think that pretty well covers the site unless you have some specific questions.
Any commission members with the applicant at this point in time concerning the site? Seeing none, if you gentlemen, please continue.
I think at this point, we'll have John present the traffic analysis.
Excuse me. While John is coming up, I was remiss in recognizing that we have two of the directors. We have Kenny Michaels. We have Michelle from the Park and Rec Department here to also answer questions. And Dave Gielo, who's our commission chairman, is also here to help out if you guys have any questions of the commission or the two key people in the Park and Rec.
Good. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here because the Institute of Transportation Engineers does not offer any substantive information on municipal pools as far as trip generation, traffic patterns, and the like. Since a trip generation study was not part of our scope to the architect, I've taken that on as a former traffic engineer. My credentials, I can speak to in elaborate on, but my last study was for the Cancer Center at Yale New Haven Hospital, which involves some 3,000 parking spaces and an analysis of both Yale New Haven Hospital and Yale School of Medicine in New Haven. If you need more, I will elaborate. So in the absence of data from I.T.E., it became apparent that we needed to prepare a trip generation study that looked at the existing facility itself. In evaluating data that the Park and Rec Department provided for 2014, 2016, '17, part of 2018 and 2019, the highest use is during a weekday. We therefore took attorney movement counts on August 1st, and then staff did a entering and exiting traffic on August 6, the Tuesday. From that, we can take the 95th highest percentile of 2019, which is higher than the previous years, for all those entering and exiting using private vehicle. We then predicted the current trip generation by hour for the facility. And then we added the trip generation for a second group, which is the swim program that come by bus. When we overlay those on top, which are not during the peak period, we also add the staff that come with those students but in their own vehicle. A little bit elaborate, perhaps, but what we're trying to do is get a real picture of what is happening at that pool at every particular hour, both vehicular and with bus traffic. We then took all of the current predicted peak hour trip generation, and we added 16% to go to 2040 and to accommodate or to anticipate future new trips attracted to the facility. It's interesting. Note that our predicted population in Wallingford is only going to go up 1% between now and 2040. That's not a great increase, but we think we did accommodate a good amount of future trips as well. All that being said, we have predicted 88 peak trips between 1:00 and 2:00 in the afternoon. It's not during the peak of the North Main Street Extension. And be aware also is that the pool opens at 11:00 in the morning, so there really is no AM conflict. If the primary traffic is 11:00 to 7:00 o'clock. With these figures, it's also easy to estimate the predicted use of the parking lot itself. And we were able to predict about 85% occupancy of that parking lot with 111 spaces, plus five more for handicap use. Tell me what you need to know in addition to what I've given you now. We're under the 100, so therefore, while we did do a lot more work in anticipation that it'd be a full traffic study, we in fact find that we're below the 100 mandated in the zoning regulations.
Sure. Any commission members? Mr. Kohan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so the study you did is on the pool last summer.
This past summer, correct, 2019.
So, you know, a lot of, you know, design work was done looking at other towns and their pools. I'm thinking maybe it would have made a little more sense to look at, you know, traffic from West Hartford or some of the similar, you know-
Excellent question, and that would be my first approach. I mean, why spend hours generating all this data when we can find information from another town? No one collects the information that we're really looking for. It was frustrating. Cheshire had daily information from previous years, and then they updated their software, and they lost the whole amount of information. So then we went out on the internet, and we looked at various traffic studies. They all, including our project architect, what he found in California, they're all recreating the number of people that come by group, such as what I said, as far as the swim program as opposed to the general public. So we found a dearth of information across the country. This is, this to me was more interesting and more challenging than I think the traffic study for Yale New Haven Hospital because there really is no detailed data on municipal pools, public pools. Because some are integrated with parks and some aren't, so they all have to have a different impacts.
So, thank you. So the 16% increase that, you know, you put into your formula, I mean, you know, based on, you know, the new pool, the new amenities, you know, we do expect to have, you know, an increase in attendance. Was that 16% taking into that expected increase?
Yes, it was. And the reason, I mean, I don't have the expertise in the first several months of a pool. So we relied on our architect to give us guidance as far as what type of an increase. And I'm going to let him speak to that, but understand that there's a group of people there that will use the pool, and then they'll use the splash pad, and then they may even go over and use some of the passive recreational facilities. But it isn't like you're going to have a doubling of the facility based on, again, what Michael has. Michael, do you want to elaborate more on your experience?
Sure. So as John said, there's not a lot of statistical data on other pools, but we did mine what we could from West Hartford, New Britain, Hartford, all the pools we've done over the last 20 years. And what we typically see is a bump in tag sales or memberships by 20% to 25%, and a bump in actual attendance around 10% to 15% on a daily basis. So you get the benefit of getting more people to purchase the tags, but that 20% to 25% doesn't translate to a daily 20% to 25% bump in attendance. And so I think the 16% was sort of measuring out the 25, 20 to 15, you know, 16 is what we arrived at. I don't want to say it's arbitrary, but it's, you know, your crystal ball is as good as ours. But we did mine a lot of data from other communities, and that seems pretty consistent across the board over many years.
It's an interesting facility in that, look at the fluctuations in the population just in attempting to be there and count on a peak day, and then you leave and the peak day is the next day or whatever. But, so these valleys are going to increase. We're going to see now a rise in the use of the pool consistently. There are some days that there's 50 people out there. I mean, and so this is going to have a better utilization across the board. But even if I doubled the 16%, I have 1% for growth and 15% for new attraction. If I double the 15%, I still wouldn't get to the 100.
And if I could also add that, on this particular pool, while it's difficult to calculate based on historical data, the advantage you have here is everybody through the curb cut is going to the pool. It's not like all of these other communities where half the people through the curb cut could be going someplace else in the park or in the school. So here, the data is probably more accurate than we could mine out of any of the other parks.
So my last comment, I guess, on this is, you know, there are other amenities, not just the pool now. So we have the, you know, sand volleyball court and, you know, picnic areas, you know. Was that taken into, because some people could be coming to use the volleyball court and not the pool. Was that factored in as well?
Well, what I looked at is, when would those people be coming? They're probably more on the weekend than on the weekday, but once again, I'm looking at the peak observed use of the pool, which was from 1:00 to 2:00 o'clock. There are many hours during that operation where you're nowhere near the 88 vehicles. There's going to be attraction in the morning. There's some people who come later in the afternoon, such as for the aerobics class, who come at 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock. I would anticipate that we're going to see more of the sand volleyball when people get out of work and are now using that in the afternoon hours. But I didn't see it as being impacting the peak hour.
And it's not coincidental that the peak hour of the pool is 1:00 to 2:00 when it's the hottest part of the day, which is when people typically would avoid the other activities in the middle of the day.
Okay. Thank you. I'll have a follow-up on the parking later, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kohan. Leave Mr. Fitzsimmons, and then we'll go to Mr. Kohan.
I guess my question was related to parking. Are we not on parking?
Oh.
Feel free, go ahead. All right. I guess, first off, it's a very nice design. Can you help me out? And I'm not sure who, probably directed to John, parking. Who wants to answer the parking question? What do you currently have and what are you proposing?
We currently have 98, and we're proposing 116.
16?
116. 111 plus five handicap.
Excellent. That was about five handicap. And how many current handicap do you have now?
I think there's two.
Okay. And I looked at the large drawing. And my sons both did the summer Sizzler, so they've been to the pool. I've been to the pool as a kid. Help me out. With Sizzlers, they drop off and the bus leaves. Do other buses stay, or is every bus leave and there's no need to provide bus parking?
They all leave.
They all leave. And then, if I understand correctly, because I should say for the record, I fully agree with Mr. Walworth's presentation of the traffic. I mean, you're never going to hit the peak hour, which is, you know, the peak hour is geared for offices, not swimming pools. So I don't disagree with anything you're saying about the traffic and the like. I think the other question I had was related to the drop-off. So if someone, if a parent were to drop off their kids, the drop-off loop is the rear, correct?
The drop-off is actually right in front of the building. The loop in the back is to allow the buses to turn around on site because currently they park on the street and offload on the street, so we wanted to get them into the park.
Yeah, so if you could, so the Sizzlers, in the past, they've dropped off right on the street. They use a sidewalk to enter the grounds. Now the bus will be able to pull in.
Correct.
Okay. And then regarding the food trucks, we've spent a lot of time up here talking food trucks. The plan is to allow one or two at a given time, or is it just one?
There's a space for two. Kenny, you want to address that?
Kenny Michaels, Director of Parks and Recreation. So the plan was, we understand that there's planning and zoning regulations after speaking with Casey on a couple of phone conversations- on a couple of phone conversations in regards to food trucks in the ten consecutive days and the twenty consecutive, or the twenty days and the three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day calendar. We would probably address it as we get closer, either look to do multiples or apply for a variance.
Okay.
Yeah, so the kind of interesting issue here is they're in a residential zone, so they're subject to the residential restrictions for food trucks rather than the commercial restrictions. And the residential restrictions allow any particular food truck, because it's based on the truck, not the site. So any particular food truck, a maximum of ten consecutive days and a total of twenty days at a location in any calendar year. And that was anticipated more for either somebody's having a party at their house and they have a food truck, or a church fair, or something like that. It didn't really anticipate this. So what we talked about is that the potential for them to, right, they could either have multiple food trucks throughout the summer, but I think that gets awfully complicated. So I actually suggested that, in this case, it might be appropriate to pursue a variance, and perhaps the, I'll bring it back to the commission to kind of revisit the particulars for these zones in the future.
Okay. And then, if I recall, because every morning in Sizzlers, you know, you go over your wallet, "Oh, I need money. We're going here today. We're going here today." There was a snack bar at the pool, right? There currently is, so the plan would be for no snack bar, just food trucks, or bring your own stuff. Okay. My last question is, again, if I could, Mr. Chairman, through you, the idea of the season. I just want to make sure I understood it, because it's not quite a zoning issue, but I just want to make sure I read it correctly. You, in the comment, the pages of documentation we have from Mr. Walworth, season is mid-June to mid-August. This past year, luckily, the pool stayed open right up and through Labor Day. So the question is, no parking concern there, but the potential is there, the season could be extended sometime in the future. Is that a possibility? All right. And then the hours, the eleven to seven, or nine, yeah, eleven to seven. Is there a chance those would be extended? Because I know you have some lighting, so would you potentially offer nighttime activity?
The light levels are not for night swim.
There you go. That's, that was the follow-up. If you're going to do nighttime, you don't have enough lights for it, right? And then, just if I read all the information correctly, because of the traffic and everything else zoning, this pool is only open and available to town residents. No rental has it right now. That's correct?
That's correct.
As of right now, that's correct. Right. Okay. Okay. And then, no, I'm just thinking other knowledge, you know. So if someone wanted to have a birthday party there, you couldn't rent the facility. It's a town facility. It's not, or like, I'm just curious, because, and maybe it's a question for you, Kenny, because you think of, like, Parks and Rec, you guys sometimes will host a kid's birthday party. We can use the building. What's the?
And we currently do that at the pool, so they have the ability to rent the shade structure. We're not going to increase the maximum numbers that we currently take, so it's still going to be the same amount of bodies or people that would be coming in normally, and would keep the same timeframe. We do it in two-hour blocks per weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Mr. Hein, I believe you had a question or two.
You broke it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually had a question regarding the traffic. And I understand that the the peak hour for the pool would be between one and two P.M. during the week. Did I understand, did I get that correctly? Okay. But that one to two P.M. hour, is that, is that the peak hour? Because that's when you have the buses coming with the kids? Is that what causes the that to be the peak hour?
My observation was that there were just a larger group of people coming after lunch to use the facility, and the ones that were already there stayed longer. I mean, it's, you can't really put your thumb on it, but it isn't from one to two when the buses come. The buses come at two-thirty, and their instructors come at two-thirty. So when you look at the data sheets that we provided, you'll see that the increase of normal operation and adding on the swim program in the Sizzlers increases rather dramatically at two to three. Still not approaching the eighty-eight, but the, it's a phenomenon. I think it just says that the warmest part of the day, let's, everybody gets in the car and they finally, it accumulates to a point where it's in that particular time of the day.
Okay. Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. And thinking about this, I could understand how this could be very difficult to sort of analyze and figure out. But it seems to me that, you know, just because you have a lot of people, or the most people using the pool between one and two, that doesn't necessarily translate into there being increased traffic during that period, especially if most of the kids are getting there by bus and leaving by bus. That's one vehicle. So, you know, do you have, did you look at the weekends and try to figure out, you know, is there more car traffic, you know, during the weekends as opposed to, you know, a Tuesday or Thursday during the week?
While the weekend, it would all be obvious to us, would be a higher use. It doesn't really show that in all of the numbers that we have for hundreds of days of data. We see that the weekday for, is it weekends for leaving, for vacationers, for people that use the summer elsewhere. But I also noticed that the peak traffic on North Main Street Extension is during the weekday. And that's why I monitored turning movement counts at noon time and at five to six, which is, we don't have any traffic data for North Main Street Extension despite the developments that have taken place there. So I had to go and use the state's data for Route Five and find the peak for Route Five and translate that over to North Main Street Extension. But I, please be aware that if there was an increase in traffic, this is a fully actuated signal with a pedestrian phase. And we're going to actually relieve that, because if there was parkers that came to the pool before, they might have parked on Beaumont, but they're not going, there's more capacity inside the facility. So those pedestrians who are using the actuated signal are not going to interrupt North Main Street Extension anymore. So for a number of reasons, I, without having looked at a full detailed analysis of a weekend, I think it's going to be similar to the weekday.
Okay. No, and I appreciate that. I just, as I was thinking about it, I was thinking, you know, when we're talking kids coming by bus, and I'm thinking, well, you know, that's, we're looking at traffic and you're talking one bus as opposed to maybe ten cars to get the same number of kids there on a weekend.
It's interesting that, and I'm sorry if this is, we're dragging this on, but the weekend has another swim program, only that occurs, I think, seven or eight days during the weekend. So when you look at them in the buses on a weekend, in fact, the impact may be even less. And the instructors are on the bus with the kids, so those trips have to be considered in the fact that it's not exacerbating the situation.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hein. I have just a, I believe Mr. Fitzsimmons actually covered pretty much all of my questions, and I agree with him as far as the traffic study you presented, but I do have just one question. I'm not sure it's really for you, perhaps more for our town planner, Mrs. Han. You know, it was represented that the traffic study was done, you know, just simply based upon non-residents. And it was indicated that at this point in time, they don't anticipate giving passes to non-residents, that it would only, excuse me, it would only be for residents of the town. If they made a decision to allow non-residents to have access to the pool, how would that be handled here? Because that could have an impact on, certainly on the traffic and the traffic study. What's been presented here this evening, you know, could be, I won't say irrelevant, but certainly could be, you know, something different than what was presented. And would or would it not be appropriate, given that, you know, if we were to approve that as a condition of approval to make it, at least at this point in time, that it's for residents only, and then if the applicant wanted to come back and make it available to non-residents, they would have to come again for a, you know, modification to their approval. I'm just kind of throwing that out there.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. That's something that we talked about in some of our meetings, which is, I think, some of the programming decisions that are made have some impact on the level of trip generation that's occurring. The kind of good, as Mr. Walworth pointed out, the kind of relief valve on that is that even if there was a technical tripping of the hundred-peak-hour trips, which the representation is that there is not, but even if there was, there is already a controlled light there. So we don't have necessarily the concern. So say we took it to the next level of a special permit, and there was a traffic study done. I think the town engineer expressed, and I agree, that we don't anticipate there would be any problems that would come out of that traffic study. So I think that's just background important to keep in mind. But at the same time, I think you're making your decision and your classification here in calling it a site plan application, not a special permit application based on the trip generation, on the representation that we're under the hundred-peak-hour trips. And you're not that far under it. So, I mean, I think that was understood in our conversations is that whatever decisions you are making were based on the specifics of the representations being made. So, yeah, I think it would be appropriate to say, okay, here are our understandings, you know, here's our understanding of how the programming works. So for example, for the specific item, which is probably the most relevant one to traffic, if they, if it were to ever to be that non-town residents could get tags, then that would have to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think that would be appropriate. I mean, I would ask the applicant to make sure they have a comfort level with that.
We have no problem with that. I think that's fair.
Didn't think you would, but I just wanted to raise that issue.
It's a fair point, because it will give us an opportunity to be able to see what's going on the first few years if we ever decided to change that. And we might find out based on what's going on. There's no way we could change it, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other commission members? Seeing Mrs. Han, do you have any comments on the application?
Just briefly, I, a few things, sort of in reference to my last comments. So first, and this was in my notes to you, the, my recommendation to the applicants based on the representations made is that I was comfortable that this would be appropriate as a site plan application rather than a special permit application. In this case, there are two things that could trigger special permit. One is, it is a special permit use in a residential zone. So if this were a vacant piece of property and they were coming in to have a government facility here, which is the closest category we have, it would be a special permit. But I was comfortable, my recommendation was that because the use itself is existing, and again, because the representations were that the programming don't significantly impact what's happening there. It may happen slightly differently, but I don't think it intensifies really anything. So I was comfortable that this could be submitted as a site plan application, and the other is obviously the traffic issue. So, but I think usually the commission has to make that determination formally, so that's.
Thank you. I guess we've all heard Mrs. Han's recommendations as far as this to be treated as a site plan rather than a special permit. Any commission members have any comments, concerns about having it treated as a site plan rather than a special permit? Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Saiter, Mr. Chairman Saiter. Yeah, I had to dig out the regulations, and I read this over several times, the difference between, you know, a site plan and a special permit. And quite honestly, based on my interpretation of the punctuation of our regulations, you know, I could see how, you know, this could be a special permit just based on the size and intensity of the proposed use, which is, you know, some of the criteria for a special permit. I personally, I don't think I'll have an issue if this is not a special permit. But I did want to ask the town planner if this would make a difference in, you know, we really didn't talk about the design of the pool yet. And, you know, my biggest concern is over, you know, the proposed size. You know, this was a big issue at the town council meeting, and a lot of residents spoke out about, you know, how this is going from forty-three thousand square feet down to eight thousand square feet, a tremendous reduction. And a lot of people were concerned about that, as well as, you know, the number of lap lanes. You know, there's four currently proposed, and a lot of people spoke in favor of, you know, having, you know, six or eight. And based on, you know, my attendance at the town council meeting, I think someone asked the developers if they could come back with, you know, an additional plan that included, you know, additional lap lanes, and what the, you know, potential cost of that would be. I don't know if that was ever officially made a recommendation, or if that ever happened. So this is where my question about, you know, the difference between the site plan and the special permit comes into play. Just, you know, can we, you know, basically deny this if we don't think this is large enough? You know, does that make a difference with, you know, the site plan versus a special permit? Am I making sense?
Yes, yeah, yeah. No, I'm just thinking about my answer. I don't see how, as the Planning and Zoning Commission, you could say we think the pool is too small, whether it was a special permit or not, because I think that's really a decision for other bodies that are involved in this. Does that answer the question?
Yes, I agree with that. Okay. That was my comment.
Any other commission members with any comments concerning site plan or a special permit? I guess from my perspective, I would agree with our town planner that I think that this could be covered as a, you know, as a site plan rather than a special permit, unless any other commission members disagree. I think we will go forward with that. Again, Mrs. Han, any other questions or any other comments?
Yeah, just a couple other quick things. And just to be clear, again, that determination, from my perspective, was made based on the fact that it was already there, so it was essentially grandfathered in terms of the use. We're changing the specific site components, just in case that comes up with something else in the future. Okay, and we talked about traffic. You had a response from our town engineer slash public works director in regard to his position on that. And then, two other things, the food trucks we already covered. And then, I did have, you saw, I had my kind of typical comment letter in there with a lot of comments and a lot of responses, and from the applicant's design team. And the majority of my comments were addressed, there are some remaining kind of minor details that still need to be ironed out in terms of some of the, the design specifics, but I don't think it's really anything that has any bearing on probably the decision that the commission would make tonight. So I just would ask that you would make my comments condition of approval. And then there were two things that were left out of my comments. One is, and this kind of came up after the fact and was also brought up by our environmental planner, so I've suggested it as an additional condition of approval. So there is a de-watering plan that needs to be developed, because I think there's a somewhat high water table there. So I spoke to our town engineer about that, and typically, that's something here that is done as that is done as part of the, um, bid process further down the line. So that's not straying from the norm. Um, you don't usually have a lot of involvement in the de-watering plans, but I would, so my recommended condition is that the de-watering plan is to be designed by a professional engineer and reviewed and approved by town staff, including the engineering department, environmental planner and planning and zoning staff, um, and that it be reviewed as part of the pre-construction meeting. And that's, that's all standard, um, but because it sort of didn't come up until later in the process, I didn't have any other comments about it. Um, and then just something that I accidentally left out of my comments was, um, the stormwater management plan. I think it came in under a different heading, so just let it be retitled. And then, as you know nowadays, I always ask that it get referenced directly on the site plan so that thirty years from now, somebody can point to a stormwater management plan. Um, so those were all of, um, my comments and recommended conditions of approval.
Just have one comment, Mrs. Hand. Uh, the gentleman indicated that that walking path through the, uh, I guess the wetlands, that that was going to be eliminated. Is that eliminated on the plans we have or should we ask for revised plans, have that eliminated or just simply say, or if we approve this, that that walking path would be eliminated?
Yeah, I, that was a condition of their wetlands approval, which is in your packets. So on final sets, after you approve something, if you are inclined to approve it, after you approve it, we ha, we, with any application, we iron out the remaining conditions and then they give us six final sets of plans. And that's where they iron out the conditions through all the commissions and boards. So that's the point where they would remove it. But you could always, if it's, uh, for kind of added comfort level, you could always say that that's to be removed from the final plans.
Okay, thank you very much. This is not a public hearing, but we do allow members from the public to, uh, comment on applications. Is there any members of the public who'd like to comment on the application? If so, please come forward, state your name and address.
This is weird. Chris Shortell, One A Casella Drive. First of all, I want to thank everyone for their work. And these questions, Commissioner Cohen kind of read my mind because I think a lot of my questions are based on a lot of what you've already asked. So, uh, first question, these questions all come from a position of, I'm a big supporter of this project. So just playing devil's advocate. Uh, if, and I, there has, but there was no motion to your question from the town council. It was discussed to add lap lanes, but there was nothing formal. So my question is, when this does go back to the council, presumably in January, if the council made a motion to add funding for two extra lap lanes, what does that do to the process? Does it come back here? Does it blow the whole thing up?
Well, that would be a change then in the, I guess it would depend upon how it impacted the size of the pool. Is that correct, Mrs. Hand? I mean, as far as whether there's lap lanes or not within the pool, I won't say is irrelevant from our standpoint, but it's really the size of the pool that we, that we're looking at. Is that correct?
If nothing about the site design itself changed, so right, if within what's happening within the water, if nothing changed, I don't think they would have to come back. If there was, if it necessitated a change to the site design, so the pool gets a little bit bigger, that would necessitate an approval, which if it were minor, could be handled administratively, but that would be up to the commission, the planning and zoning commission.
I guess unless there's, you know, within a couple more lap lanes, if we have a couple hundred people that are interested in doing laps, it increases our, uh, the use of the pool, but, uh...
Can I respond to that, uh, as well? We had three people here at that meeting that were interested in lap lanes and we did an enormous amount of studies of what was going on with those lap lanes. And based on the utilization, we saw no reason to add lap lanes and add expense, any further expenses to the pool. That, that was a commission decision, a committee decision.
And Mr. Chairman, I appreciate, and I appreciate that response. I think where I'm coming at it is that the additional lap lanes would allow, uh, the YMCA to run a swim meet, uh, at the pool. You can't run a swim meet with four lanes. And also the, the lanes can be removed. You could use that part of the pool. You could open up that whole square of the pool to make, in essence, make the pool bigger. So that's kind of, I agree with what was represented just now. There were like three people who wanted more lap lanes. But, uh, my next question that I think was just answered by Casey, but I'll ask it anyway. So if we wanted to, or the town council wanted to add nightlights so that you could swim at night, uh, that would be a big change, I'm assuming. We'll come back to you.
Yeah, that, that could possibly handle, and again, Mrs. Hand, don't correct me if I'm wrong, that could possibly be handled administratively.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, there's the physical change and then there's the programming, the impact of the programming change. So if the programming significantly, if the programming changes enough that it might impact traffic generation, so if you started holding swim, if, if there was the capacity to hold swim meets and that's not something that's done now and that would substantially impact traffic, or if having night swims would substantially impact traffic, then that could potentially open up, I mean, that could potentially trigger like a special permit and things like that. If it's just a physical, a minor physical change that you can demonstrate doesn't really impact traffic generation or anything else, then, I, I mean, that would be something, yeah, that would come back to the commission, but would be handled administratively. But we do usually like to, I mean, when something comes before the planning and zoning commission, for, for the most part, ideally, these things would be at least most of the way ironed out to prevent having it come back several times.
Right. If I can add just one point to the lighting, from a nuts and bolts standpoint, um, to do a night swim, you need a hundred foot candles of light, which we cannot do with a fourteen foot pole. So those poles would be driven up to at least twenty-five feet, uh, which would be in violation of the regulations.
Chairman, what's, sorry, I just, what's the magic number in terms of the size?
The magic number is...
To, to, that would not blow this up. The town council added, wait, it's eight thousand square feet. If town council added four thousands more square feet, would it blow it up?
Well, I, I, again, when you're saying what, what would blow it up, I, I think that would be a little difficult to, to say at this point in time. I think what we're saying right now is we're, you know, we're approving or considering a plan, uh, that's based on what's being presented to us. If someone's making changes to it, uh, much like if someone were to make change, if we approved a building and someone's looking to make change to a building, it's not, well, okay, you have a, a ten percent leeway here before it becomes an issue. If you're making a change to a plan, you're making a change to the plan, so that would come back to the commission. Again, if you're doing something which is within the interior of the, of the pool itself, that's, that's one thing that we really don't have any, any control, I won't say any control of. I think as Mrs. Hand said, if the change you're making is going to increase the activity of the pool, then that would perhaps be something that we need to look at. Uh, but if you're looking to say, well, we're going to increase the pool from, what's it, eight thousand square feet to ten thousand square feet, well, now you're making, it's a change in the design, so it's a change in the plan. Is that a fair assessment, Mrs. Hand?
Yeah, and I would just add that, that doesn't mean it would, it would blow it up. It just means it would have to come back before the commission for, if there was a significant change for, so timing wise, that might make things challenging, but it just means that the commission would be considering a different, a different plan. But it doesn't mean it would become necessarily a deal breaker. They would just think about, they'd be looking at a new plan.
It would be a, you know, a revision to the plan or a, you know, or a new plan. Would you have to start from, uh, you know, ground zero? Well, to some degree you would, uh, but...
Can I add to that question as well? The current pool is utilized, only one third of it. So we're not taking a utilized forty-five thousand square pool and taking it away. We're taking away a third of that, which is about fifteen thousand. We have an eighty-five hundred square foot pool and a three thousand square foot splash pad. We're going to have a diversion of people being in the pool, especially the young people who will be going to the spray pad, because that's what they're all interested in. So we've done a lot of research. We know this works. We've worked with Michael and his crew. We believe the numbers are where they are, are there because we've done the study, the work and put the effort in to come up with those numbers.
Good, thank you.
Three more, very quick, three more questions. I know how annoying this is, trust me. So, uh, I think you are considering a plan that includes all of the add-ons that may or may not get into the final pool. Like I think I've heard the splash pad.
Yes, that's correct.
Playground, except for the tray.
Everything that's on this, everything that's on the plan, which has the splash, splash pads, the, the play area, the sand volleyball, that's all on the plan. That's what we're considering.
So the whole upgrade. And then, okay, four, that was one. In the splash pad, there were two options for the splash pad, one with I think additional elements, but it didn't affect the size of the splash pad. Is that correct?
Uh, we're not, at, at this point in time, we're looking at the splash pad. I don't think the splash pad on our plans show the various types of elements.
Okay, that's...
Right, we have not decided on those yet. We have the number that we're going to put in there, but we haven't decided. We're going to try, I think we might get some kids to give us some, and input on that at some point.
Well, we've seen the water slide in the pool though.
Okay, um, just again, back to Commissioner Cohen's point about traffic, because I also worry, I think about, I think it was said that the data was looked at back to 2014. My fear is that pool usage was a lot higher prior to 2012 before the near drowning. A lot of that was out of town, which we, we found out when they, I know when you did the audit, but at the same time, you'd go by that pool before 2012, you'd have all these cars on North Main Street Extension Park. They couldn't, they couldn't fit. Now, I know you're adding eighteen spaces, but I guess that's just a comment. I'm a little bit worried about that because I think you're enhancing the property and, and you're having elements there that, that, I know the peak hour is one to two, the volleyball court won't get used till later, but I just worry about that a little bit with the, with the traffic. Then my last question through the chair to the, possibly to the commission, just to reiterate, just, I guess just to ask one more time, if you can give me comparable pools, because I did go to two of them last week in West Hartford. I went to Beachland and Fern, Fern ledge. And unfortunately, I went the day after a snowstorm, so it was kind of stupid. Uh, but they look pretty small. And so I was just a little bit, they weren't shaped the same as this either. They, they have a, they had a lap pool and then this little sort of canal. And then you get to the part, the zero depth entry part, but it was just, what I could tell though, they looked really small. So I was just concerned that, are there any other pools you can point me to? And I promise I'll go when there's not three feet of snow on the ground, just to try and look at them.
There, there's a, there's a list of, uh, pools we've generated that I'd be happy to share with you of all the pools we've done in Connecticut over the last twenty years. Uh, and a list, the size, the community population, if the community has multiple pools, I'll list those. So I can provide that list.
That'd be awesome. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other, any other members from the public that would like to comment? Yes?
Good evening. Joe Dahl, Nine Dell Court, Wallingford. I'm for the project also. I grew up in the neighborhood next to the pool, anybody, I'm still there. So when I started, it was a mud pit. That's when I started the learning how to swim. We had the slide going into the mud. Loved it. The biggest concern, or not a concern, my question is, I didn't hear anything about lighting. Uh, right now, on the south side of the property, there's two poles. Anybody that's familiar with the neighborhood, my backyard drops about twenty-five to thirty feet down to the pool. It's town property, but I'm at the top. There's three backyards on Dell Court. When the leaves are off the trees, the poles are thirty feet high, the lights are in your face. And I have pictures, which I'd love to leave to somebody. I took them last night. It only makes sense to me if they're going to tear the thing apart and they're going to use pole lights. Put them on the north side, because the south side neighbors don't care. You won't get any complaints from them.
We, we are eliminating those two thirty foot poles and putting in, um, full cutoff fourteen foot poles, uh, for security lighting. So, uh, the light levels will be directed down with no scatter and the top of the pole will be at fourteen feet. And we're putting them, um, near the building entrances and exits. And, uh, there are a few along the parking lot, uh, but they'll be well below the light level that's there.
So the pool's not going to be lit the way it is now?
No, no, those cobra heads on the telephone poles are going away.
Can they go away now? I asked them to shut them off. They told me they're securing an empty pool that's got a six foot fence around it, but whatever. Anybody who loved these pictures, I'd love to give them to them.
You can give them to our town planner if you'd like.
Okay. Couple of other things that, just while I was listening to what's going on here. When you guys approved that, I mean, this is final plan you're approving here tonight? Or?
This is the plan that they've asked us to approve, yes.
Okay. And there's, there's no concession within these new buildings? And I'm just, I mean, I hate to come to this party late. I, I guess I'm here late. I'm just curious as to why there wasn't a concession put in.
We, uh, we did a, a review on previous concessions and no matter what we did, didn't seem to really satisfy people. And in many discussions along, uh, with our committee and as long as well with the mayor, we felt that we didn't want to get involved in the food business because of all the issues with the border health and, and so on. So we thought that we'd stick to the swimming business and not the food business and let the food people do the food thing.
Okay. And the other thing I would ask is that it's multi-use, meaning you were talking volleyball courts and more pavilions in the back. And I think I read somewhere where the pool could be closed and those other uses could be open at some point?
We're going to have what we call shoulder season. So in the month of September and maybe the month of May, depending on weather conditions, um, they might be open longer. We might keep the, the splash pad open longer or open it earlier. Um, you're not going to find a lot of people in May playing volleyball. And as far as the playground goes, um, utilization will be there on those, um, shoulder seasons as well. The pool area will be closed during the, uh, bad parts of the winter, January, February and so on.
Right. But the, and the, so the whole area would be the same as the other town parks? It would have to close at dusk?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other members from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the, uh, the applicant. If, uh, applicant would like to make any, uh, final, uh, comments on the application, certainly you're not obliged to.
No, I, I think, uh, we've told you what we're thinking about, so.
Good. Commission members, any, uh, any final? Mr. Hand?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess one of my questions is, is all of this going to be built at the same time or is it going to be phased in?
All at the same time. It's going to be one project and it's going to be done at the same time. This is the best way to do it and that's what the town council asked us to do, is not to phase it in, just do it and get it done when we met with them. And we all agree with that because when you start phasing things in, you're asking for more expense.
And, and I just want to be, um, clear as well, um, through you, Mr. Chairman, uh, to Mrs. Hand, uh, our role here is not to really, um, uh, determine what the right size of the pool would be, right? I mean, uh, our role is really to, to look at the plan, make sure it meets our regulations and, and that's it, right?
Yeah, so you're looking for compliance with your zoning regulations and whether or not it's, it's basically come from a use standpoint compatible with what was already there.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that, that, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about that and I think it's good discussion, but I also want to make sure that the public understands that what our role here, uh, is tonight.
Right. You have, you have site design and programming representations that have been made to you and that's what you're considering. And then if something were to change, really the, the, the larger, um, decisions are made and brought to you as a proposal and then you're looking for compliance with your regulations. So, right, the other decisions are really more for the council and the pool committee and so on.
Yeah, because I, I think we've all had the opportunity, if we wanted to, to, you know, go to the, the various meetings to discuss, you know, the, the pool, the plans and, and all of that. And now the, the plans before us to make a determination on. So if there's no more comments from the applicant, Mrs. Hand, you have no further comments? Mr. Fitzsimmons has one comment with his broken microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just one question to follow up to, uh, Mr. Dahl's question. And I, I had written it down earlier. Clarification on the term shoulder season. So Mr. Walworth's comments talk about mid-June to mid-August, that this year was extended through Labor Day. So if you have the shoulder season, you, you mentioned where they might be able to play volleyball, but not the pool. So potentially the expansion would be, it might be open a longer season, but not pool related, but the facility. Okay.
But the spray pad would be available if the weather conditions were, you know, good.
So, so I guess the question would be, is potential for it to be open May through October or April through November?
Possibly, I would think May, I think April, we all know here is a rainy, cold, damp season, but I would think possibly sometime in May and maybe into October, depending on the weather conditions.
Okay, so it's, and that would not be, the pool is weather dependent, but the shoulder season, so to speak, would be a couple of weeks before the pool's open. Okay, I just wanted a clarification on the record.
And the...
I kept thinking mid-June to mid, mid-August.
Spray pad activities are done by hitting certain handles.
I get you.
What happens there is if nobody comes, the spray pad won't be you.
I, yep. Okay, thank you. Yep, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Seeing no more questions from anyone, I entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve site plans, site improvements, T L B Architecture LLC, 739 North Main Street Extension Community Pool Park, application 3, or, I'm sorry, application 237-19, the site plan for an existing special permit use for T L B Architecture to allow modification to the existing public pool facility, including but not limited to reduction in existing pool size, reconstruction, construction of a splash pad, activity lawn, a sand volleyball court, and place gate, construction of new bathroom buildings, picnic pavilions, and shade structure, and associated parking, site and drainage improvements, as shown on plans entitled Wallingford Community Pool Park, 739 Main Street Extension, Wallingford, Connecticut, 06492, dated November 5, 2019, and supplemental sheet revised to December 2, 2019, and 12, uh, December 3, 2019, subject to inter-office memo, memo, yeah, memo, and memo, forget it, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Water and Soil Division, dated December 5, 2019, compliance with all comments in the letter from Casey Hand, Town Planner, to T L B Architecture LLC, dated November 27, 2019, dewatering plan to be designed by a professional engineer and reviewed and approved by town staff, including the engineering department, environmental planner, and planning and zoning staff, dewatering, dewatering to be reviewed as part of pre-construction meeting. Stormwater management plan to be properly titled and submitted as separate document, reference to compliance with stormwater management plan to be added directly onto final plans. Non-town residents' use would need to come back to planning and zoning, and elimination of walking path in wetlands to be included in final plans.
Thank you, Mr. Penoi. We have a motion on the application. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, the application's been approved. Have a good evening, gentlemen, and thank you, Commission, for all the work that you've done on this for the residents of the town.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Hand, if you would take us through the rest of the agenda concerning bond releases and reports.
Okay, bond releases, both bonds are ready to be released.
Do we have a motion on the releasing of the two bonds for Sunwood Development for 9 South Street and 44 West Street, as recommended by our town planner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we release the bonds for Sunwood Development, 9 South Street, and Sunwood Development, 44 West Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Moving on, Mrs. Hand.
Okay, administrative approvals, you only had one. Do we have any questions about that?
Anyone with questions? Seeing none?
Okay. 2020 meeting schedule, I did make one revision, that's your March meeting, that I made a revision based on a Jewish holiday, and hopefully that is ready for your acceptance and approval.
And we have a motion to accept the schedule for our meetings for 2020, as recommended by our town planner.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the 2020 meeting schedule for planning and zoning.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Moving on.
Okay. There was, no, there was a meeting in November, and that was a denial of a, it, basically, it's a garage that's on an independent piece of property near Community Lake, and it's associated, has been associated with a house in the past. There were variances granted to have it, have the garage be built. There was an application to put a residential, to put a house kind of above it, and that was denied. And there is nothing, there is no meeting scheduled for December because they did not receive any applications. In terms of reports and officers and staff, just before we do, excuse me, the zoning enforcement log, there are a couple other things I wanted to report on for upcoming discussion and meetings. I distributed to you tonight for your review, and I've been talking about this for a little while, our town center regs. There are some things that have come up now that they've been sort of put into practice that I think it's, it's sort of become apparent to me, maybe needed to be clarified a little bit, and some things that needed to be, mostly just clarifications that I think, so I went back through that regulation and reworked it a little bit, a few things in it, and proposed modified, proposed modifications to some of the wording and things like that, just to, I think, make it a little more user-friendly and a little bit clearer. I don't think the intent of very much, or really hardly anything, changes. I did also note in there a question that has come up, been raised persistently by two property owners, or one in particular, in the zone regarding the use of office space, one of the determinations, and I think that was the only thing that became more restrictive in that zone. Everything else certainly became more permissive, provided things were done in accordance with kind of appropriate design and everything, but the one thing that became more restrictive is we modified office use and restricted it to second floors or the rear of buildings. We've had a lot of internal discussions about this. I, we don't need to get into it right now, but I, I think there were some appropriate planning reasons that that decision was made, but it has come up for further discussion. So, I said, I'm planning on bringing the, the reg back to the commission for some clarifying changes, and I said I would bring that up. So, you have that in front of you. I think the appropriate step to take, if the commission is inclined, and all the microphones don't break, to, maybe not right now, but to schedule a meeting, to schedule a workshop or to include that as a discussion item in a workshop over the next few months, all of the changes. Okay? And then, the other thing, other two things I wanted to talk about from your last workshop, for next month, I will have that I X I-5 and watershed language for you, and that can be scheduled for a workshop as well. And then, also for the next meeting, we will have the, we did our APA inspections just before Thanksgiving, our Aquifer Protection, or APD, Aquifer Protection District inspections just before Thanksgiving, so I will have letters that will serve as basically reports with the outcomes of those inspections. But in communicating with Mr. Cohen about this a little bit, I think it, it sort of came up that it might be appropriate, and, and I think this makes sense anyhow, for you to hold a meeting as the Aquifer Protection Agency, which would allow you to review those reports, ask any questions that you have about them, anything like that. And then, also, if the commission were interested, or if there were questions, not all of the sitting planning and zoning members have participated in, as Aquifer Protection Agency members before, so it might be a good time to do sort of a review, review or have a discussion, and that's what we had kind of taught, Mr. Cohen and I talked about a little bit, or communicated about a little bit, in terms of what kind of the charge is, and then what, what do we do during our inspections and kind of what does that cover? And also, because several of the locations are, are at their point where they have to submit reregistrations, so they're due for reregistrations. It's really an administrative process, because the way the statute is, and again, we can talk about this, but, but you will be seeing, you will be receiving those reregistrations, and usually, we handle those administratively, and we still can, but I thought we should at least have a discussion about what it is before I sent them to you. So, I, I'm suggesting for January, you, we, you have one receipt and then two carryovers, so it shouldn't be too bad, too long of a meeting, and then usually, you'll hold, you would close that meeting and then hold a meeting as the Aquifer Protection Agency the same, immediately following that.
Is everyone in agreement with that? Yes, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Casey and I did have a conversation on this, because as, as you know, I wanted to go on one of the inspections to see, you know, what it entailed, and there was a, a legal issue apparently with, with me attending, and Casey gave me the info I was really looking for, which I'm, you know, was happy to get, but, you know, I think for that meeting, we might wanna talk about, you know, what our jur, legal jurisdiction is in this case, because, you know, the, the thing I brought up was, you know, when I was on inland wetlands, we used to go out on, you know, site walks, sometimes we'd find violations, and seems to be a little, little difference here. So, I think, I think that would be a good topic to follow up on. And, and thanks for that info, Casey, I appreciated it.
And I guess, I'd like to schedule, if provided commission members are agreement, you know, a workshop in January to take care, to discuss, you know, the, your proposed tax amendments to the town center regulations, as well as then to, you know, just continue our discussion on, you know, adding additional uses, you know, to the, you know, to the I-5 and looking at the I-X zone, so we can keep that moving forward. Does any commission members have any concerns about that? With that, then if you would send out, I always get the name of the survey wrong.
Doodle pole?
The doodle pole, yeah, the monkeys, or whatever it is.
Yeah, there's all different options, outcomes, animals.
Get one that I can pronounce and send it out. Yeah, doodle, whatever. So, if you could please do that.
Okay, so I'll do that for the, the workshop. Do you wanna make a motion now to hold a meeting as the Aquifer Protection Agency, following your regular?
Yeah, I believe we do. And can I have a motion on that, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we add the Aquifer Protection discussion for our January meeting.
Second, second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, anybody abstaining? Moving on, Mrs. Hand.
Okay, and just to be clear, you are acting as a separate agency for that, so it's technically a separate meeting, and will be posted as such. Okay, and then finally, the zoning enforcement log. I do have an update on the cemetery. We, I had a very productive meeting with our Public Works Director, Town slash Town Engineer, and our Corporation Counsel, or our Town Attorney, and they have had some preliminary plans drawn up to address the two issue, the two kind of design issues or site issues that are the site violations that are referenced, which are the drainage issue and the slope of the driveway. The driveway was supposed to be designed to create a smooth transition, and it really doesn't. So, they've had some, they're having some, or they've had some preliminary designs drawn up. We kind of went over those. So, they are in the process of, there is progress being made towards addressing those, those issues, and then we discussed the other issues, which are the easements that need to be provided between the two properties, and I think that was everything, but essentially, there is forward motion, there's significant forward motion at this point, so I do anticipate that we are actually getting toward compliance at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
And then, any other questions about anything else on this?
Well, just, I know we've talked about, you know, cheap auto rental, and that, if we could see what kind of action can or can't be taken, because that, we're back to where we were, and I know, you know, it went to court, there were some arrangements that were supposed to be made, and it's back to where it was and probably worse than that.
Yes. I had been working with the Assistant Town Attorney on that a few years ago, so I will re-raise that issue.
And then, just, excuse me.
No, I was just going to say, I, I think there are a little more teeth there, because the second site, when it was approved, was approved with the very clear premise that that was in order to relieve some of the violations on the other site, and instead, now they're both just overcrowded and in violation, so.
And then, just one other one that you could, when you have an opportunity to take a look at, and I think it's North Colony Auto Repair, it's right across from the Catholic Cemetery on North Colony Road, and that whole lot, it used to be a gas station years ago, and that is just, I mean, every piece of asphalt has a car on it.
We, we are familiar with that site. We revisit it frequently, so yes, we will re-raise that.
As far, yeah, as far as what action can be taken to, you know, have it.
Yeah. And to that end, I will say, our zoning enforcement officer, Amy Torrey, started this week as our full-time zoning enforcement officer, land use specialist, so I think that should be very helpful in helping us to hopefully kind of address some of these things that have been kind of, that we haven't had the resources to give any attention to, so I'm looking forward to that, as I'm sure you are.
Absolutely, good, thank you.
And with that, unless there are any other questions?
Any other questions, any comments from commission members? Seeing none, at this point in time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I just bring one issue up?
Absolutely.
Just a quick informational item. Thursday, we're having the regional planning meeting, and we're gonna be discussing Meriden's P O C D, but more importantly, we're planning the January dinner, and since I'm acting chairperson, I can have the dinner in Wallingford. And I'm also working on the speaker, and I sent Eugene a subject matter expert on transit-oriented development, so I'm hoping we can get that person, and, you know, hopefully, this will all come together, and it's certainly open to, you know, the commission members and, you know, I'll have more definitive info Thursday, but.
Good. Thank you. After that, any, any other business? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the planning and zoning on whatever day. This is December 9.
Second, second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we adjourn. Have a good evening, gentlemen.